Mr. Hollister City Clerk. I am letting you know that we do not currently have a quorum for the city council. But we will get started as soon as the quorum gets here. It should be about ten to fifteen minutes. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience, everyone. Senator Cruz, this is a special meeting of the Hollister State Council and a special joint meeting with the successor agency, the Hollister Lead Development Agency on December 2nd, 2024. Meeting is now called to order. It is 4:25 PM. City Clerk Pudgekis call for me.
Councilmember Perez?
Present.
Councilmember Morales?
Here.
You hear Casey?
Here.
Vice Mayor Zemus and Councilwoman Barnes are not present. Thank you. Councilwoman Morales, who can lead us in.
We're going to begin. As soon as. To them. For which. One issue. Individuals.
Do you have any reportable actions on November 12th when we go to sessions? It's not reported. So there are a lot of special orders waiting. So I want to have a mention and you know that.
No, it's a commendation that Gina Peters asked.
Okay, there you go. We're going to do a commendation of the Hollister Police Officer's.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I wanted to, we usually do presentations and and commendations. We have an annual event, but this is something that I didn't think could wait that long. And this is something that I do. Renee was the school resource officer for the high school for three years. And just recently ended that assignment back before. But we want to do this special recognition, which. Just to acknowledge and express our gratitude for Officer Renee Reyes, who has served the Hollister High School SRO for just a little bit over three years. Officer Reyes consistently gone above and beyond in ensuring the safety and well-being of the students and staff at the high school. His dedication to building positive relationships within the school community has not only fostered a safe environment, but also created a sense of trust and support among the students and staff. Whether through engaging with the students during breakfast and lunchtime or doing a tall new presence during the school events, Officer Reyes has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to the Hollister Police Department's mission and values. We are incredibly fortunate to have such a dedicated officer as part of our department. We look forward to continuing to work together with our schools, Mid Hollister High School, with a safe and welcoming place for all. I have a recognition here likely with. Renee Reyes, Officer Reyes has demonstrated exemplary service while serving as a school resource officer for the high school. Officer Reyes has helped to sell the front relations that between the school and police department and has enhanced the safety and protection of students and staff. His dedication to service reflects highly upon himself, the department, and the city of Hollister. Comclamation pin. Hello. I just wanted to thank the city council, also the Hollister High School District for their continued partnership and cooperation and continuing along with the school resource officer program. Having been there for three years, I've seen just how valuable firsthand it is to have a school resource officer present to engage with the student and preserve the the safety of the most valuable asset out there, which is our youth. So thank you very much.
More affirmation honoring the city of Salinas, as we partner in public safety by achieving. Honoring the city of Salinas as a valued partner in public safety. Whereas the city of Hollister Fire Department has ordered a new tow truck that will require extensive training to operate safely and efficiently. And whereas the Salinas Fire Department currently operates taller aerial apparatus as part of their firefighting crew. Whereas the city of Hollister and San Jose, city of Salinas, has approved the sale of their training tow truck to the city of Hollister for a nominal cost. And whereas the Hollister Fire Department and the citizens of the city of Hollister, the city of San Juan Batista and the San Antonio County will ultimately benefit from the decrease in service time of a new aerial apparatus due to obtain the training truck from the city of Salinas. Now they're flying the city of Hollister, we give help to claim the city of Salinas and the Salinas Fire Department to be valued partners in public safety.
Madam Mayor and Councilor, I just wanted to applaud you for your endeavor to deploy a tow truck for your city. It's an important and valued asset. It's a recent release has completely realized the versatility of the unit. We were happy to be able to provide this to you. Back when we bought our first tow truck, we turned it to the city of Santa Ana, which is where this truck being done. So it's a, it's an older piece of equipment that has seen good use and benefited many firefighters in their training. And I applaud you for making this program a reality for the Hollister Fire Department. Thanks, thanks to the chief pulling for this and also for this. And glad we could help in the same time.
25, I'm praying by council of San Diego County Governments. They're going to be participating.
Hi, good afternoon, council members. This is Bino Abraham, the executive director of the San Benito Council of Governments. And back in October, I was asked to provide a monthly update regarding Highway 25. And I just wanted to share that Caltrans is leading the environmental study and we have completely completed four public engagement rounds. Or otherwise, none of the notice of preparation, the scoping meetings. So we had one here in Hollister at the Payne's Restaurant. Another one was in Santa Clara County at the Gavelin College. And then we had two virtual. One was exclusively Spanish and the other one was English. In all those meetings, all four meetings, we provided Spanish translators if one was needed. And the reason for this scoping meeting is to collect public input and see what are their thoughts on the alternatives that we are trying to analyze and do the study on. And the public period is now extended towards, to December 31st. So the last day of December of this year. So on your screen, you will see the process map. What to expect next? So once the public period is come, is completed, Caltrans will start the SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. And the NEPA, which is the national equivalent of our California standard, which is the National Environmental Policy Act. Those will be completed for the entire stretch of Highway 25. It will, we are expecting it to complete by about 2026. It's a huge project. It's a huge project and it's going to take some time. And there's a lot of pieces that the state wants us to look at. So in 2026, we will have a draft EIR. And then, once that is completed, it is finalized, it's adapted, then we will go into design. So according to the Caltrans timeline, in 2029, we will be able to start construction. That's based on the current timeline. I'll pause there and see if you have any questions for me.
This is awesome. It's, I don't know, seems to be like every thought. This is really good news. Thank you so much for giving us an update. It's good to see you moving forward. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. And I just wanted to say that a lot of this is happening because our COG board made it possible for us to keep moving and they helped us remove roadblocks, especially with conversations with Caltrans and our stakeholders. So, yeah.
Thank you, Mer. Actually, just a question and a comment as well. And so, those regards to the potential litigation where the plaintiff made the claim was out of the contract maintenance part. Rather than page 151 of the statute, Council on Word 24, 2457, reservations added to contract to their license shows to be not current and valid. So I only, it's more of a comment or ask it. I'm sure there's some facts or case and I checked the CSLP site today and it appears to be, I would, I would think there'd be some sort of abuse of contract with regard to the maintenance services with their performance. And so I was just answered to see what in the
So when we reviewed this, I did look that up. And so the contractor had two licenses, the one that expired many, many years ago. And then right after this, in current for 2020.
Thank you for that. So then my comment was on page 10, which was, I just want to thank Councilmember Morales who looked up donating or allocating about $10,000 towards the former wars post 1942 for the acquisition of their vehicle. And so thanks for doing that. I would certainly like to challenge members of our community. I think of everybody and the city also gave $1. We would have more than enough so that those guys could get a good vehicle that we can save comfortable and allow them to move forward. Councilmember Morales, thank you for that. I truly appreciate that. And that would conclude on comments. You know, I'm sending
Motion to briefly be started, to move. He says second. Certain. Always in favor.
Yes.
Yes. Council Business Item 7.1, consideration and action regarding resolution of proceedings of Councilmember Wallace's sentence. So before we begin, I need to put out five couple things. With those years at our last meeting, when it was discussed, I had asked the city attorney, if the last year training had been completed, I need to send this from the previous this one I'm hearing last August. And the answer was that it took a while to get in the transfer and that we have one now that had not been scheduled. So that was three weeks ago. So I'm asking again, has that training been scheduled or completed from Mr. Resendez?
Mayor and Council, this is Mary, excuse me, online. And no, it has not either been, it's not been scheduled and/or completed.
So beyond our time, what are the plans for him to, I mean, has he been requested to do this? I mean,
So I came, I, I sent a written correspondence asking for availability. I have not received any availability as far as dates and times, and so I will continue to reach out.
All right. The other item I wanted to get some clarification on has to do with the Councilmember of the sentence's eligibility to serve as vice mayor. And they were finally verifying to me that Councilmember of the sentence never did sign the updated code of conduct ordinance that is approved during last year. I had informed about this months ago and was told at this time that staff believe everyone that signed it, I may put into my slide, was never advised that they have not signed. So I want to clarify with the city attorney, house person is not forced to sign this document, but his refusal to sign may be ineligible to serve as vice mayor or sit on committees. Is that not what our language reads?
That's correct. That's how the code of conduct reads.
So Mr. Resendez, meaning he had not signed the document, he's ineligible, but he kept the big vice mayor title anyway and giving each of these servings of vice mayor of the South here. So let's move on. I want to start and make it clear, the code of conduct is applied on municipal code and you will fully violate that code or violate law of the laws. While Mr. Resendez has pointed out perceived infraction by others, he has yet confused or acknowledged or accepted any responsibility for his own violations of this ordinance. And back down our last meeting, after I described the code of conduct violations, which involved Mr. Resendez not following proper procedure and notifying the vice mayor or the city manager or city attorney regarding any concerns we have about the conduct of another council member and having instead chosen to make their public accusations, which were third-hand and unsubstantiated, but rather than responding to the violation, we could double down and violated up the conduct again by bringing up even more passive and unverified accusations against the same council member showing remorse. So to specify again, those code of conduct sections, conduct of members, members shall refrain from abusive conduct, personal charges, or verbal attacks upon the parent or owners of other members of council, boards, committees, and commissions, the staff, or public. When I look at this respect for process, members shall perform their duties in accordance with the processes and rules of order established by the city council. Confidential information, members must maintain confidentiality of all written materials and verbal information provided to members, which is confidential or privileged. Also elected and appointed officials conduct with each other. It should honor the role of the chair and maintain order. It's the responsibility of the chair to keep the comments of members on track during public meetings. Mr. Resendez has continued to repeat these violations of our ordinance. Councilwoman Resendez has frequently claimed to his being silenced or his free speech being violated. However, he has always been allowed to express his opinion regarding any of the items brought forward in our meetings. The code of conduct violations stem from his insistence on firm personal accusations or attacking members of council in his speech. Here's what the ordinance says with regard to debate and council members' conduct with each other. Practice civility and decorum in discussions and debate. Difficult questions, tough challenges to a particular point of view, and criticism of ideas, information, or legitimate elements of debate by a free democratic action. Free debate does not require more justified belligerent, personal, impertinent slanderous that may be abusive or disparaging comments, nor does it justify conduct intended to struggle in meeting or encourage disorderly behavior. I also want to again mention that despite the repeated advice and presentation by our city attorney about not commenting on other thousand other social media and appealing potential violent violations, Mr. Resendez has continued to make comments like a thousand other social media has done so to me personally a number of times, and it is also violated by code of conduct because of the main policy of abusive nature, derogatory comments that he is making. This is Mr. Resendez's fifth disciplinary hearing that's occurred over the six years in office, the two separate sets of council members. His abusive behavior, which has been very disruptive to you, has continued. I have recognized that he restricted his time with vice mayor and he restricted them serving on committees for an additional year. However, in light of the fact that during our last meeting, he began disrupting and violating the code of conduct by continuing to attack another council member with passive and unsubstantiated accusations, and also the fact that he kept the complex senior title, even though he was ineligible to serve, I am requesting an additional sanction. And so I'd like to get input from the council on this. I'm suggesting that conference funds be restricted. So those are my recommendations. Are there questions to the council or opponents? Do we talk a couple of comments on this?
Yes, Mayor Casey, we currently have two. The first is Jeanne Wallace.
Open, Mayor Casey and councilmembers. Morales, Perez, and Burns. The ongoing distraction of councilmembers and business behavior has necessitated this unfortunate expenditure of taxpayer dollars and time and effort from the councilmembers, and has no doubt taken a toll on the well-being of those of you who has targeted at the dais. I'm sorry that this has been among the burdens you have had to bear as a consequence of your service, and I thank you for your efforts to uphold standards of civility on the city council and for our community. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Devon Powell. Will be followed by Elias Selena.
Thank you, council. Now, regardless of this matter, I suppose that I am supposed to be making appeals to the concepts of rule of law in a civil society. And yet we exist in a society that is disloyal to a greatest, the highest office, and nominated a man who is apparently falling with strippers who did charity, running to the secretary of defense. In light of such conduct, Mr. Resendez's behavior seems mad. So ultimately, this rescind is in court. There's not any action or any remedy of this council that can be that is going to change the policy of his behavior and risk conduct towards members of the council, towards staff of the city of Hollister, or towards members of the public. And in light of that inordability, the only question that remains in the twilight of the power that we have is what you choose to accept in the way that you have been treated? And using the immediate power of this, of this branch of the city council, while it exists, to assert what things you will and will not accept in the way that others treat you? And that is all that is left, I'm afraid.
Our next speaker is Alis Selena.
Getting me there and councilmembers, as a public member who has witnessed the years and years of misbehavior and, and just outlandish behavior of Councilmember Resendez, it is something where he became empowered by the previous mayor by not bringing him in and not calling him out when, when the comments were made, when the behavior was happening. And I really appreciate the fact that new councilmembers have chosen to have a decorum, you have policies, you have procedures, and you've been following them. And unfortunately, Mr. Resendez continues with his behavior. He is not here today is another lack of respect for the position that he holds, not being here to acknowledge the process that you go through and to acknowledge the fact that he was part of the system that got the policies and procedures and your bylaws and your municipal code, your, to say, this is inappropriate and we're not going to allow this to happen. And now that that this city has spent thousands of dollars already on counseling, just private counseling with Mr. Resendez, and also counseling with all the councilmembers as well as staff who are involved on how to get along. And then there was a list there for a couple of years on, you know, go to the facts, be honest, you know, be courteous. And it just went out the window. And all these, all this money that has been spent and it just validates his lack of respect for authority, his lack of respect for his fellow councilmembers. You can agree to disagree without being disrespectful to each other. My question to you today is, what happens when he does not acknowledge and say he's going to be available for counseling even though he's had it before? And so is there any teeth to the fact that if he doesn't show up and he doesn't set up an appointment, so what happens? Do you have new councilmembers coming in? And I hope that the new mayor and the new councilmembers are going to hold him as well accountable for his behavior. And I would encourage Councilman Dennis that he does have civil action for part of the violation of Penal Code Section 295.
The next public speaker is Heidi Connor.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you can. Go ahead.
Thank you. I, I agree with what Ms. Selena said about the money that is involved with five different disciplinary hearings. So I ask how much money has the city spent in having to do these discipline hearings and investigations? How much time has been spent? I've heard councilmember Resendez always talking about not wasting taxpayer money, but here he is forcing the council to waste time and money just to try to make him behave like a professional? This cost should come out of his discretionary funds. He should have to pay for it. He should have to sign the code of conduct. Councilmembers are elected to represent people in your district and get them things that they need. Did he bring any economic development shops or businesses to the West Side in all the years in office? I'm not sure a dollar store counts. Instead, he spent years in office and time and energy organizing these Hollister guardians to come in here and support his antics and discredit this council. I've seen pictures of him at organizing barbecue, flyer about at dinner, held at Ignacio Velazquez Vault, and secret meetings held at schools and people's houses. That's a lot of time and energy to create this hate group to attack other members of the council. What a waste. He did all this to slander and discredit our new mayor and to get her out of office. He ought to be ashamed. We are losing a lot of good and thoughtful councilmembers because of him and Ignacio's antics. Good luck to Hollister. You will need it. Thank you.
Speaker is Jacqueline Hickerson.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, you can. Go ahead.
Great. Good afternoon, Mayor Casey and councilmembers. My name is Jacqueline Hickerson and I'm a resident of Hollister for 33 years. Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak today on this topic. I understand that Mr. Resendez is not in the chambers today, so I will speak as if he were. It is impossible for the city council to get anything done when one of you refuses to cooperate and insists on dominating conversations, stirring the pot, calling others' names and slandering them. The people of this city want to get the work done. Roland, you have done nothing to represent the people in your district. In all of your time in office, you never asked for a special investigation for your district on the West Side to fix the sewer smell there. It was councilmember Burns that did that, and things are finally getting worked on. Instead, you spend all of your time focused on attacking others instead of working with Instead, you spend all of your time focused on attacking others instead of working with them, trying to see their point of view and respecting it. Councilmember Resendez, you are the reason why our county may end up with no fire contract. You made a big stink at the May budget meeting and said we needed to do something right now and wanted the termination clause instead of waiting until the end of the agreement. Just look at this mess you've created. You should step down. This council would have gotten so much more done if they didn't have to deal with your poor behavior. Thank you for your time.
Our next public speaker is Carol North.
Good evening, Mayor Casey and council. I just wanted to give the last comment or my last comment regarding Councilmember Resendez. We go back a ways. I had hoped much better from him, honestly. But you know, there's just not any room in these tough jobs for insubordination. The community wants you to work as a team and I don't know how you do that when you have one making so much trouble. I mean, come on, every meeting was like that. The bullying that I feel I get from him when I walk into the chambers and he's yelling my name out. How many times people ask me, why don't I come to meetings? I go, I got tired of Councilman Resendez's rudeness. He's vindictive. He makes some weird votes because he gets mad. Sometimes he doesn't want to vote, steps off the DAS and goes away from a meeting that's active. Who does that? I've been here involved in politics for decades. I've never seen anybody do that. Leave the DAS in a public meeting. That's sad. And you know what? I hope whatever you do, that you take care of this and I wanted to say to Mayor Casey, I love your leadership on this issue. I want to take, thank Tim Burns for bringing the issue forward. I know he was frustrated with the last council that that I was part of and how we were all fighting. I bet he has a really good idea now about what was going on because it didn't stop. It's still going on four years after I left the council. So I really want to thank you, Tim, for giving it all your effort and also Mia, you handled it well. And I hope you wrap it up just as well as you've handled it. Thank you very much.
Public speaker is James White. My opponent. Mr. Fox, you can unmute yourself. Mr. Fox.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can. Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening to all the sitting council members that are present. You, I believe you all are credits and fine public servants. I'm here today to address the issue of snake and importance that really strikes at the heart of the values of the community and really the nation. Recently, Roland, a city council member and a teacher at our local remediation school and a graduate student of San Jose State University's educational leadership program, has launched unwarranted and substantiated attacks against fellow council member Rick by weaponizing Rick's past as a means of discredit his ability to serve. And this behavior is unacceptable. It's unethical and antithetical to the values of redemption, equity and inclusion that Roland himself claims to uphold. And let me state unequivocally that Roland's actions are not only morally wrong, but they're also gross violation of ethical principles and legal guidelines as a public official. Roland is bound by the California Fair Political Practices Act under Government Code Section eighteen or eight one zero zero, which demands impartiality, integrity and fairness. He is weaponizing some on a history to score political points and a flagrant abuse of his position. And such actions undermine public trust and sow division within our community. Moreover, as educator and a graduate student at San Jose State University's Educational Leadership Program, Roland's behavior starkly contradicts the mission of the program he's actually pursuing, the Laurel College of leaders dismantling systems of oppression and promotes equity-minded practices. It seeks to prepare transformative leaders who address systematic inequities and fosters inclusion. Roland's public attacks flies in the face of these principles, perpetuating the very stimulus and systematic injustices that education seeks to eradicate. This is particularly egregious given the well-documented systematic inequities faced by marginalized communities, especially the indigenous peoples. Data from U.S. Department of Justice says that indigenous individuals are incarcerated at nearly double the rate of white individuals, often due to structural inequities such as poverty, discrimination and lack of access to resources. The Prison Policy Initiative of twenty twenty highlights how frequently early interdiction with justice system disenfranchises individuals, creating lasting barriers to rehabilitation and education and civic engagement. Roland's actions ignore these harsh realities and weaponize this against Rick, a fellow council member who, like so many, has worked hard to overcome his past and contribute meaningfully to the community. This is not leadership. It's cowardly. It's unethical attempt to discredit a colleague. It's a behavior that's unbecoming of a public official, a teacher, and especially someone aspiring to lead an educational equity. Let us not forget that redemption is a cornerstone of shared American values.
With all the public comments.
Thank you, Mayor. So in response to Ms. Salinas's comments, which for those who might not be able to see it on the screen, it says, listen, expect, honest, accountable, participate, others that source and be open minded, or it's sort of open mind. And so in the event people are, we obviously forget I'm not being sponsored, we can't miss it. It was follows that follow through that. So it's clear to me that Councilmember Resendez is what I would define by by definition, an official offender of the code of conduct. I believe as a council, you not only should, you have a duty and responsibility to hold him accountable for his actions. And I was part of bringing this forward and he was part of the initial council that approved it, so he can't claim ignorance. He may claim defiance, in my opinion. But no matter what, I think at the end of the day, we need to hold him accountable for his conduct. And so I'm going to recommend that we support the merits of our members in regarding disciplinary activities. I will support that one hundred percent. Now, thank you.
So then we had ninety second, second, sorry. A little slony up here. So then we we let me a little pop as I snap. Hi, almost in favor.
Yes.
So we get in that, we have just voted to remove as another, this sentence as Vice Mayor. They're going to do our next item, which is seven point two, the resolution to appoint Councilman Perez as Vice Mayor. Don't think we have a report. Do we presume that you have any questions upon this side of the slide? Do you have any further comments on this side? You have one.
Carol North.
Hey there. I fully, I fully endorse Councilmember Perez for Vice Mayor. He's so deserving and I think it's only fitting. So thank you for for considering this. Have a good night.
Our next public speaker is Elias Salinas.
Thank you. We can go back to twenty twenty-four, actually December of twenty twenty, I'm sorry, year twenty-four now, where the former mayor, Ignacio Velazquez, had a meeting with Mr. Perez and he wanted to appoint Mr. Perez at that time as Vice Mayor. And so now it's taken four years and the fact that we had a previous mayor who had a problem with diversity as well and and what his plans were. It was literally dangling a carrot, dangling a carrot before Mr. Perez at the time. And it was also Ignacio Velazquez and William Resendez that encouraged Councilman Rick Perez to run for city council. And it was actually Ignacio Velazquez that assisted Rick Perez in filling out his forms to become an applicant to become a candidate for city council. And so it is, it is four years later when it's not well-deserved appointment, but it is, it is four years later where Mr. Perez has sat and has done his job diligently, has not agreed with everything that everybody does, but has done it with dignity, has done it with decorum and has done it with respect. And even though this is for a very short period of time, I think this is a really great idea and I thank you for whomever that brought me near Mayor Casey, if you're the one that came up with this idea, because I think that this is this is basically the icing on the cake for what Mr. Resendez has been doing. And it just takes away a little bit more of his dignity if he hasn't been left on this on this appointment. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is James White. Your opponent.
Yeah, I'd like to say that I believe this is a really good move for the council. I think it sends the right message to the community that that Rick is, we call him Mr. Hollister because he loves his community. And you, a fanatic is somebody who loves God more than you. I think Rick loves Hollister more than almost anybody. So I'm very happy that he would be given that title. I think it's a very good message, you know, as a board member of the Youth Alliance. I'm, I believe that we need to hold up people who put in the time, the work and the effort to give back to the community. And I think Rick exemplifies, you know, the sacrifice of public service. So thank you, Rick.
Yes, yes. I would love to have seen it.
I will be showing a report regarding budget stabilization strategies.
This is a good presentation that's being learned. So David Marion, City Manager, talking during tonight's presentation, and we have the and then Services Director, Casey Sturger here as well. And so our recommendation this evening is we provide an international report regarding budget stabilization strategies. And the council can provide direction and work feedback to set up. So just a recap of our update that we provided on November twelfth. So we went over the twenty twenty-one financial report, which is our audits as well as a single, a single audit report, a overview on the audit process, an update on our fire services contracts. We gave an overview of the general fund and all funds. We went over both funds with structural deficits and outstanding balances, enterprise fund rates, user fee study that we're working on. We provided a summary of the closeout of last fiscal year as well as quarter one, then it had a handful of small, little deficits, you know, with that. During that presentation, we were given direction to return the call to the council meeting to discuss budget stabilization strategies. This is the presentation this evening. So just as a recap, this was one of the slides that we provided, which showed the year and fund now. So this is what we end each year with. We did provide two slides, one showing the rescue plan's revenue and the expenditure with Hollister Farms, which is the three million dollar payment that was made in twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year as well as what that would look like if we removed those. So as you may remember, we did receive about ninety point seven million dollars of one-time revenue that was booked in twenty-two, twenty-three. And then we did have the payments to Hollister Farms when we are having the shots right there at TJ Maxx that were open in the Christmas season, in late November. So we have developed the strategies that council can implement to help stabilize the current future year budgets. We did some consultation with one of the consulting groups that we're using as part of our audit team that's Bouchain's Consulting Group, principal of the organization, Stephanie Bouchain, had traveled to her focus today. And so she did put together the right place with the council and provided to the court basically testing to this process. And so we reviewed short-term and long-term strategies that could result in increased revenues and or decreased expenses. The strategies were also reviewed against the current budget fiscal policy as well as Resolution forty-four one seventy, which was adopted on October fifteenth. That was regarding the, in the event of the current fire agreements or county or city sand wand that these are terminated. And with the exception of disciplinary discharge and voids, it will take any and all actions to ensure that our personnel, office, collective, staffing reductions for low existence position allocations as they exist at the time of the issuance of the petition. So that's kind of the background, the framing of the strategies. So from a revenue side, sales tax measures, you're currently at nine and a quarter, the max rate allowable is ten and a quarter. And then we got a general tax or a special tax. General sales tax measures are passed by a simple majority, whereas special taxes are two-thirds vote. And so with a special tax, that would be subject to the public safety. So if you declare what exactly you're using the dollars for, there's a higher threshold for the general fund dollars that is used at discretion. Our TOT tax measures projected to pass, that is trended in the same position throughout the ballot, and so we expect that to pass. And then I'm going to go over a handful of different ideas and strategies that the council can entertain. First being a property of business improvement district. And so CDs of many cities, the benefits are to real, benefits are real property in the district. So you draw a boundary, certainly the CDs and different town areas. Fund services including, but other two, plenty of other right ways. Sidewalk, that remains security services, business attraction and retention, graffiti removal, beautification and decoration, tree maintenance and plant. And so to establish a PBIT, as they're known, public hearing and ballots, the initiative public hearing ballots are mailed or mailed to property owners within the district. If approved by those property owners, then a PBIT is adopted by ordinance. Usually it's a five-year period and then it's been reapproved for up to ten years. Similar, but this is on the business side, so the business-based improvement district. So this benefits the businesses within the district. So if you think of the downtown area, you may have a property that's owned by a property owner, but they rent to a business. So the first one would impact the property owner, the second, the business. And so this benefits the businesses within the district, funds physical improvements with an estimated useful life of five years of work, including benches, parklets, tractors, etc., decorations, parks, and also fund activities that benefit the assessed, or the assessed businesses, which is an assessment for sponsoring public events, music and public facing promotional activities. To establish it, business owners give a petition to the city council, signed by twenty percent of the businesses within the proposed district. Council mails a ballot to those eligible districts within the proposed district. If the majority vote in favor, then conduct two public hearings. If there's no written protest, if fifty percent or more of the district's business owners, council can approve. Both of these would probably be difficult because the city has a long history of providing these using general fund dollars. The flip side of that is The flip side of that is that those dollars are gathered throughout the whole city and are done in one particular carrier of the city. For tourism business improvement district, your council has recently provided some biannual support to visit San Bernardino, their turn based in Cittas. And so they're in the process of working with the city and the county. They'll be asking for consent for the county to plan a district within the city. So your staff is having initial meetings, beginning with them now. And if it's successful, it means the increased tourism is only theoretically satisfactory. So when you're establishing hospitality and tourism businesses within the district, that will pay 50% of the total assessment amount, submit a petition to the council or the county, three public hearings, or offer the option for public protests. And then it can be formed for initial term of five years, with possibility of ten year renewal. And they're managed by convention visitor heroes or tell associations for similar nonprofit destination marketing organizations, which is what your visit San Bernardino for this. There is what's known as a utility user tax that can be imposed by a city or county on consumption of utility services, including, not limited to, it's for all your utilities, electricity, gas, water, sewer, telephone with the cell, long distance, and invasion payment. Most cities that have these, before 1986, before 1986, these are, this could have been a vote of the council. You now have a different process for that. Most cities use these as general taxes. So statewide, it's generated on $1.8 billion per year. Our neighbors Gilroy, Salinas, Seaside, Monterey, Watsonville have these in place. Utility user taxes, they range anywhere from a percent to 11%. In some areas, there are different rates that apply to residential versus commercial or there are different utilities that are selected. Most common rate is 5% applied across pretty much all utilities. Because most larger cities already have them, half of California residents are service business, correct? So just for some comparison, this is from the 2018-19 state controller data. These are the percentage of general fund revenue for highest groups out there. The Fireball at 30%, down in LA at 13.3%. And then you have, excuse me. You have for the highest user tax collection, so for Santa Cruz is in there at $175, Monterey at $126, as per capita. For reference, $75 per capita for Hollister residents, who are generating $3.3 million. So this is a graph that shows how cities that use a user, a utility user tax, the percentage on average, if you look, it's about 12, 13%. And then how that's spread across to different departments for our full services to. So sell or lease assets, so monetize underutilized city-owned properties or facilities by leasing or selling them, leatherback property that is currently vacant, we're using right now. It's a storage site for the construction projects that we have going on, the road projects, the 190 Maple Street facility. We will have the bridge building to come and open or closing that lease out of Gatlin, because they're, you know, the UCA is opening. And then ensuring that current leases are mutually beneficial for both parties. Continue to negotiate fire service contracts with the county and San Juan Batista. Evaluate shared services to meet the city's cost recovery goals for our policy. Our policy says in most cases, we would be fully recovering the costs of services we're providing. So it may be nice to provide services at a discount if we leave this, against our lawsuit. Continue efforts to secure grant funding, your consent agenda tonight had quite a few grants on there, firing PD. You could look at your business license tax overall and revisit the canvas ordinance to increase the amount of licensed dispensaries. Right now you have two, there's two permits out there, there's only one that's been open since your, it's passed. We talked about these at the, at the last meeting, completing adopted user fee study. So again, the cost recovery, we're approaching the completion of that. And will be presented in January. Completing the dot new enterprise fund rates, so we are wrapped around the corner on that one. Just whenever final calculations with our consultants on that. Both of these are, or all three of these are originally consultants, as well as completing their program study. And then our continued focus on economic development, increasing marketing efforts to show the business friendly, as well as the tax incentive programs that we currently have. And you look at other programs, those, you know, in the long run, pay dividends. In the short term, you're not, you're paying dividends on current dividends. From the expenditure side, so I just want to point out that through this process, I, as city manager, refuse to marry priests because of the concerns that I have with the budget. And want to ensure that I lead by example. I want to, we want to look at renegotiating vendor contracts where applicable and attempt to secure lower rates for contracted services. Cut nonessential services, temporarily scaling back and pausing services. These are all strategies that are not directly related to public safety or public health. Explore outsourcing opportunities for city services, evaluate which department or task can be outsourced, resulting in cost savings and or greater efficiencies. Update the council discretionary policy to not allow for appropriations unless the budget reserve requirement of 20% is met. So we're currently under that reserved requirement now. Differ noncritical maintenance for city infrastructure and facilities. We work with public works to assess those with a tiering system. You know, a lot of those projects have been deferred for years. And so, you know, we've made strides on critical items to get those space. But there's, there's a lot of maintenance on it. We're here working on 100 year old buildings. There's surprisingly rapid rebuilding. Department heads to continue examining cost reduction strategies. Continuing the informal hiring freeze or adopt a formal hiring freeze. So as discussed at budget, we did have a planned entry in there of $2.2 million budgeted vacancy savings. So I've been holding existing vacancies and evaluating new as staff date under employment. We evaluate each new vacancy as they occur as to whether to fill or to hold. It's never a pleasant discussion, but you always have to look at time reductions in force, work with departments to reduce staffing levels. Again, these are strategies. As for the next handful of these, these would require bargaining effects of labor groups. Freeze employee requests to leave payouts until budget deserves to meet the city's budget fiscal policy requirement of 20%. So right now, there's, in various MOUs, you can sell back different, you know, your vacation balance increments. And so we would look at if this was a strategy that the council was interested in, freezing that until we're at a reserve. So we're, we're, we're doing a lot of, a lot of spending that our reserve is not at your adopted reserve rate of 20%. So I think that's something that you've got to keep in mind is as we spend, every dollar that you spend, you should have 20 cents in your reserve. That's basically roughly, something like that. Employees leaving the cities, employment, obviously they will get paid out for any leave that's due to them, that's state law. And then there's some MOU provisions regarding sick and then different types of leave payouts. And that we all do. Again, this will require bargaining the effects with labor groups. You look at merit increases, so temporary holding and then merit increases until the budget is stabilized and the targets are met. Again, that will require bargaining the effects, as well as reviewing the employer share of staff benefits costs. So with that, that is our informational report tonight, different strategies that a council can look at. And we're happy to take any feedback, answer questions, please. There's definitely going to be some comment inside, like to improve.
Any other questions or comments? So thank you, David, for that sport. When we go back to the, your first chart, when we talk about revenue and incentives. And I want to go back that, you know, we're, yeah, we're still in an area where we have a lot of unknowns. And so if we take the first chart or graph number one, given that we knew that we were going to have a lot of funds, we, the city council decided to put in our general fund, have a lot of costs. So really, we're, we're looking at graph number one. Because that, that was part of the strategy was to look at our general fund expenditures. And whether we knew of, you know, some of these payments or not, that's, you know, here or there, really, we're looking at that number one. So as we had a significant increase in expenditures, we also had to fund a lot of the departments that were at 40 to 60% vacancy rate. I think it was almost 80 or 90% vacancy rate in our department heads. I think we had maybe one or two. The city could not function that way. There is no scenario in any of these years where we wouldn't have, you know, been able to just handle normal health business. So in reality, we didn't have to fund the decisions that we were being hired with department heads. And looking at the actual costs, we still have few unknowns. But really what we're looking at is that, you know, 10% contribution to the county and subsidizing the private. Do you see any other significant expenditures that sit in that? Other than the unknowns, right?
Well, I think for, for sure that the fire contract, I mean, when we provided our update on 2023, 24 numbers, that was showing a $4 million deficit across the board. And, you know, methodology can be debated. And so when you look at that, that was under the context of let's start there and work our way up. That was 2324. And so we're now in 2425. You did have an increase with the purchase of the tour truck of about a million and a half dollars of this year's budget, but that's about a million of real costs outside of that truck down payment. And so, you know, as you continue to project that, I mean, that's four or $5 million right there. Overall, I think we've had, we have had rising costs. We've had, is the cost of doing business overall has gone up. And one of the challenges that I've seen in here is that there was decisions made on vacancy savings. And when I went back and looked through the budgets, you would think that you would have actual savings in those line items. And we didn't. So if you're spending based on vacancy savings that aren't really there, and then you fill those positions. If any of those purchases have ongoing costs that come with them, which almost everything you purchase has some underlying ongoing cost, then that catches up with it too. So overall, I think I answered your question, sure, a majority of this is that, right?
Right, because I, so, you know, when we look at budget, we look at where are absolute costs, right? Outside of the discretionary, in terms of how do you, how do you provide to base services that cities? Then outside of that, you look at, if you, if you're not bringing in enough revenue to pay for those basic services, you need to buy your roads, you know, the basic services. Then, you know, people look at some of the measures that you just mentioned. Or, and, and the reason why, you know, I, I want to be very clear about this is because a lot of the measures that have been brought to our attention are kind of extreme efforts. And I, I want to just make sure that we're not going to the extreme. We're going to the first and obvious one, which is the fire contract with the county.
Right, and you have significant effort made on the revenue side of the house too. I mean, you have many funds in your enterprise funds that your rates haven't increased in years. On the street sweeping side, it hasn't increased since the nineties. And that becomes one of the challenges is that it's, it's never easy in a council position because, you know, you're, there's a prop 218 process for the rates, but it's, it's never an easy decision to make. But we're essentially providing the services at a massive subsidy. And without the general fund dollar to support that subsidy, which technically you shouldn't be subsidizing the ratepayers. I mean, you, you have a position where if you're getting, if you use water, for example, if you're getting water and you live on one side of town, you're paying a rate from Sunny Slope there, which is going to be higher than the rate that you pay from the city. That's the same daughter coming out of the pipe, we're all partners.
And for a lot of, one is we're waiting for the rate study. I think we're beginning four years for that. So we really don't know what it costs us to actually do business and provide the services. Thank you, as we want to be very careful because, you know, as people move here, they're coming, you know, there'll be $50 with the city of San Jose, and then they're coming here and paying $175, $150 to the city of Hollister. And so, you know, as we're looking at doing, you know, considering some of these options, one is enough that makes them done, presented, adopted, and have public hearings, but also educating the community about, about the cost. Because it is a huge shot to get, you know, your water bill or your services when you're not used to paying that amount. I think also too, you know, there's inflation is starting to fall up again. And so people or families are now looking at, you know, four, 500 or 600 dollar a month bill. Which again, you can add all these up and stuff, and whether it's, you know, we're subsidizing or being a fair market value in terms of the services we're providing. At the end of the day, people only make so much money. And so that education piece is going to be essential when the rate studies, intention, presented, moved into adopted. And then to educate the community about the potential increases to those services. Again, because people only make so much money. And if you add everything up, people are not going to be able to live there.
Yeah, the challenge lies in, if you look at like the water, for example, eight years. Every, every increase that's been given, every new piece of equipment that was purchased that was not calculated in those rates, you're separating further away on the loss separate table. So we're operating as a business and never reevaluating the price tag or the, the price that, that we charge. So then it becomes something where you have to look and say, okay, if we do not, if that's going to be cost too much for our residents, then how do you pick up the difference? Your general fund needs to support that difference. And then you get into some murky waters on the general fund side of subsidizing an enterprise fund, which, you know, you don't do.
No, and I think my point wasn't that. My point was, at least I've, I've been here for three years now, and we've been waiting for Rick's study for three years. So we can't, we can't operate without having the information and the draft plans to be able to ultimately adjust those costs. And we can't take action on those things if they never come to us, was my point. Not only that, but also educating our community about the impact, so that people can maybe, you know, a reasonable decision about where they live and what they're doing in this town. So maybe they work one job, maybe they work five jobs. But that's a decision that they should be able to, to know if they're willing to implement anything. There's that education piece, but why wouldn't it? But again, we can't take any action because we still don't have that information. We may have that information in January of 2025, but the way I've been waiting was three years for that. So I guess my point is, it, it sounds like we really need to address the county in terms of the fire contract, because that's 10% of our overall base budget, which is significant. And one second we need to look at, until we get those studies, that we really need to look at revenue. How do we bring in money expenses? And potentially other measures, but I think there needs to be a little bit more information about the cost and, and the impact, which is, I think the analysis, I don't think we can make this.
Is there a particular item on here that you would like the numbers on? Except that true, just about everything. Part of the challenge is, is that, as you mentioned, you had all the department heads. And so all your new department heads are going through all of this information and starting blind without audits. So we're working on the audits, it didn't exist. And so we're working on a projection of a projection of a projection. And so we're working on a projection of a projection of a projection. And so that's a difficult position for for all of us. And um you know, I I like to just, you know, thank the staff and the William and and Casey at Work Hard Get These. You know, basically, these studies that we're doing should be standard operating procedure for any city all the time. You're you're looking at your studies every five years, sometimes three to five years. Because if you have a a a inflationary impact of it, it goes up three percent. Because when looking at a rate study, you're looking at, I don't wanna bring that grade in. But if you have some circumstance that either spikes the cost or you start pulling away from what it costs versus um you know, what you're collecting, you can always bring it back and do another study quickly. In a perfect world, you're capturing a hundred percent. As soon as you adopt that study, you start moving away. And then you gotta bring it back in, and you're moving away and bringing it back in. And so um that's where on the user fee side, that's an interview on every fee. We have hundreds of fees. Uh staff have gone through a a a process of literally what went through the, I I look over at the clerk, and when when someone walks in, wants to fill out an application, that's fifteen minutes of her time, it passes over to this person, that's twenty minutes of their time. You go through that whole process. We then cost it against the fully loaded costs of everybody that touches that. And then that becomes that fee amount, which we would present then to the council for adoption, or the council may say, from a policy standpoint, that fee, the actual cost is too high in our minds. So we want to help subsidize that, and you'd make it like, you know, a a parade per man. Where it's a hundred dollars. And that may be something where we come back and it's four digits. But if we charge that, maybe you never have a parade again. And so then there's a like, you know, but from an operations standpoint, it's our job to bring forward, here's what it actually costs. Do as the policymakers would say, no, let's let's bring that, keep it at that, you may give us that direction. Um so as we've gone through that, it's been a tremendous lift. Uh and I and I think staff have been juggling that with with the other items, if they can task for it, and we'll have that coming forward shortly.
Yes, so it's, sorry. So my recommendation is to do a set of studies on this, because that is the type of analysis I think is important for us. I can't, you know, close my eyes and think that. What I'm asking for is, if we know the costs associated, what we're looking towards, and the impact that it has on our community, and all of those things. And I think you just made, you just provided a really good example about, yes, we can ask for every single, you know, minute of time for a break, but then to do that, the impact is gonna be the problem never had a break. And as you saw, the like the the uh the life party that we just had, we had, we can turn out. Um and it was something that was really appreciated about our community. It might be that. We're not talking about, right, but unless we have the the data, with with some level of analysis, I'm not saying extensive, I'm saying some type of analysis in terms of the impact, we can't really, you know, make those decisions because I might say, let's do them all, but that might be, you know, that's a whole thing to do. Because if we don't understand, again, what is the impact? Not only to the city, right, and to our ability to function, but also to the community. And we're here to serve the community.
I I totally agree with what you're saying, and I also wanna say that basically, what's happening here is is, the problem is, you're too good. You're finding out all of the problems and everything that's been messed up before, you're finding it, it's a can of orange, and you got orange all over the place. But you guys are doing a ju- a great job of trying to get us to where we need to be. Thank you, staff, you know what? You guys, yeah, we we asked, we spent more money than usual, but look at the staff there. Look at the things we're gonna get done. We just, you know what? You guys are just starting, you know, you're on your back path, and it's a but it's not the end of the path, right? Yeah, it's for us, yeah, I need to go. But it's, you know, you guys did a great job. That's what the information you have. You know, it's what you did after doing a great job. Perfect? No. But I just, just on the staff point, thank you for the hours of frustration and all the times you're teaching me. All that extra hours you put in, because you get paid for it, but also, you know, you're helping our community. Thank you.
Um, yeah, I agree. I'll I'll just bunch me with my comments after, let me go ahead and give a point first. Mayor Casey, we don't have any public comments for this item.
Uh thank you, Mayor. So um Councilmember Morales, who are a bit on a brief point in my opinion, which is we we need to have accurate current data to make an informed decision. So sort of that, you're just kind of throwing darkness at the board on the wall. And so for me, um I think he's covered a lot of it already, Councilmember Morales, and I'm sure the mayor will pick up. The way the city, so I'll keep my comments relatively very good. So I I think, again, um city manager wrote down some critical points on being all the new department heads. And so not only do we now have all the new department heads, but they come with experience from other jurisdictions, and that ended very often. Because government typically recycles products. And if they're happening here, they're happening in other places where they have happened in other places. And so um I think we have to rely on your staff and yourself with creativity to find short-term solutions to then create the data to actually find a permanent solution. And I'm I'm still very, I'm still blown away by the fact that we became aware, I don't know, what was it, maybe a year ago, about the two audits that were never done? It it seems like you're you're playing with a handicap already uh when you walked in the door, and so that's kind of been known for us, if you stumbled or did diligent research, you discovered these things. But again, if you don't have active data, how can you make a informed decision? You have to do the best, do what you have at that point. And so um we need to find some short-term solutions, doing what I'm hoping I can do on following moving forward. And so um my recollection is, your general fund is about sixty percent taxed by fire and police experts, I can I can forward standards. That's.
Budgeted for this year, we have animal control with two point eight percent. I'm just going in budget number. We're in fire at twenty-six point six, and police at twenty-three point six percent. Code enforcement at one point three percent.
Okay, so less than sixty percent is in the fifty percent filing.
Correct, and and what you don't have in there is you, and it's one of the items we touched upon at the last meeting, is we don't have a cost allocation plan. And so typically, which a- and that's something that we're also working on. So what those departments don't show is the amount of administrative time that should be charged off to those departments. So if you take of a, you know, a fire or a police department, the time that HR puts into those departments, the time that the administrative services puts in, payroll standpoint, my time, the third's time, those type of support departments, those aren't fed into their either, and there's usually a percentage if it's still left.
Again, it comes back to uh accurate data and making informed decision. And so uh it seems like there's progress that has been made and will continue to be made regardless of who's involved in that, I believe. And so from from my perspective, we can never compromise on public safety. The bottom line is, I don't care how bad our park system is, I don't care how how safe and nice our school system is. Um but we don't have a safe city. Um we've got a problem. We don't have adequate policing. Uh chief of police and his staff have done an amazing job at creating and maintaining their business. And so we're in, we're in a much better place today than we've ever been, that I'm aware of in recent time. I would, I would say, the fire department, the same thing. Um the fire team at either the last meeting or the previous meeting made a point about the fire service contract. And I I think that from my number over the years was the north of eleven million dollars. That that's huge money. And I can tell you, as a taxpayer, I'm gonna throw a hissy fit in a temper sample, and something that isn't done to make that more equitable with the next board and the next council, because I think in a lot of cases, there's residents of the community, we just tend to even not read about things. And so I have a very bad on on our line, we tend to just assume things are good. One of the problems I see, not only are we in many government agencies, is they're not run by a private industry where you know, I I've often heard, well, it's good enough if government's helping, it's not. And so ultimately, we need to protect ourselves moving forward. I have the distinct benefit and pleasure of working for the city of Visseria in early two thousand. I hope five to maybe eleven or something, nine or eleven, in that range. And as I recall, the city of Visseria was the first city in the state of California to successfully pass a public safety sales tax initially. And so there are good models and examples of that, because it sunset in five years, and they went back for another uh run at it, and they got it a second time. And so uh we need the highest quality public safety, police, and fire, animal control, code enforcement. And and those, people when they're busy getting signed, you can't touch it, because if you do that, you you compromise and save. And so um I my my suggestion would be to get the data, consider uh federal stats, uh public safety, state stats, dimension moving forward. And know that I will avail myself to help in any way I can, if I could be of assistance. Um.
Well, a ci- a citizen-led initiative has a lower vote requirement than any uh Texas law.
We can talk about it, and so and so, uh but we we gotta get that fire service contract, right? We as a city, we as taxpayers, uh appointed and elected officials have a responsibility. Uh it was done with the best of intentions, but you know, the the fire district really has very lost, and it's kind of became a shell report, more or less. And so that just can't continue to happen, no matter what, in my opinion. And so um and I I do think maybe to um start, you you know, hopefully, well, you, I was gonna say, it's up to the T O T, assuming that passes, and I don't wanna shoot ourselves in the foot, but but that may give some minimal relief, but it's not the solution for years to come. And and it probably will never be the solution to the dilemma, but um we need to look at those and be creative. And and maybe for the short term, actually do a formal hiring of the police, because you can't continue to go upside down, go negatively, and so I don't know what we do I'd be ready to do out there. Uh from whatever you say, an alternative, those feel like importantly, the next step, or temporary solution in my head, not, it's not even a solution, a temporary pause. Um and I still think, we've still got one wild card out there with one audit, so we need to sit down there. At the landstand, and I I don't know how you react to something, and you often can't work on it, but.
Correct, I mean, you still have the, technically, the twenty-one, twenty-two, with the twenty-two, twenty-three. At this time, we should be pretending we do the twenty-three, twenty-one.
Yeah.
And so um with an audit out, with audits outstanding, we could have a, you know, a simple transaction that needs to be the posted one fund that should went to the other one. Um one thing that, you know, like we we spoke at the last meeting, as I start to build out, you know, I do my fire projections and look at different scenarios and scenarios where you know, the the county gets on board and San Juan with your contract, or they decide, well, if they're correcting, I have to look at all that. Um you also have to look at how uh putting a plan in place to repay those funds that are outstanding. So your lighting landscape, your 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 other funds out there that are running them negatively, you have to pay those back as well. So that's what that audit shows, is the various funds that are out there, and we're doing that work as well. So as we build out the the next budget for consideration, all how we plan it, it'll put out as well.
Right, and and I I would say that one of your comments was, services are provided historically for years, uh massive diversity. Uh and and so that just can't be the model moving forward. And as the city continues to grow, I will tell you, um most people that are moving here, we we probably have more financial ability than those who grown up here and lived here, um and worked more locally. And so, you know, the cost of the country rural lifestyle has to be compensated for. We we, I'm I'm sorry, you know, to to have the mortgage, not the mortgage, the the street sweeper, those fees have not been increased in twenty-plus years, they're two dollars. Yeah, come on now. I mean, I I'm more than a hooky bar is in the day. And so we we we, I just, you, you as the city manager, or other elected and appointed officials, really need to make that a priority. And I appreciate the honesty and reporting advice of you, Ben. And I I think we may have that group link around it for a number of years, which we intend. And so I appreciate the fact that you're willing to take the thought at all, even though it's not a budget of compensation, it's a necessary policy. And so on, we don't get in the way of, I mean, that would be my ultimate be-all. You know, please don't lay anybody off, and and let's find a way forward. If I can be a assistant, I'll be gang, or if I find you, then I will in my self-awareness. Mayor, for that, I will be, I will be done.
Well, I tell, I don't want to be rare in things, right? I just wanna be really, really clear, because you know, um we brought it out in our last budget presentation, we touched on it again here, involving all the members, but you know, given that there's been just a lot of this flame game and sparring that happens surrounding finances and budget and different council. I just really wanna address that. This is a serious financial situation, but it stems from the fact that the required city audit financial reports were not done for the two fiscal years ending June twenty twenty-one and June twenty twenty-two. I got that right, right? Isn't that where you started? That those were not done.
That is correct.
And we also discovered a few accounting issues that I think we've been working on since then. Um these have massive impacts on the city finances, and it's created a lot of the problems, not all of the problems, but I just wanna make sure that people are aware that this happened before our current city manager, Damon, was here um under the previous administration and under the previous mayor, I'm just saying. Um Damon and all the staff that really, you guys have really been working hard to correct the errors, to bring in outside auditors and get the audits completed, and we we really appreciate it. I know we've gotten the first one done, we're still behind, and they're trying to play catch up, but I know that it's also gonna have one, been ready to, um impacts to our credit, which is gonna affect other things. So I know this is a serious issue, and I just wanted to call out that wasn't on your watch, but you're trying to fix it. It feels like honestly, since I've been here, that we've been playing a lot of cleanup and trying to clean up a lot of leftover messes. So I'm thankful for all of the new staff that have come in and worked so hard to try to get some really good um procedures in place, and the planning procedures especially, so this doesn't ever happen again. Um so I just wanted to say that, and get it out there. Um I do agree with um Councilmember Morales about I've been hearing about user studies and rate studies since I've been here, and I keep waiting excitedly about them, but I know they take time. I don't know what we can do to it, but I trust to me, that's been a long way to helping us. So whatever can be done, I know you said something about one of them, you know, the other ten, where I'm coming in, so that will be helpful, I think. The fire contract is obviously a big issue, and I'm wondering about progress. And I think they're disappointed, to be quite honest, with the county uh order supervisors who seem to be looking everywhere but at the contract, and talking about building their own fire department, and going to Cal Fire, all these things that are way more expensive than just cooperating and looking at this and helping to pay their fair share. So I'm hoping that we progress and that maybe they'll come around and when we can work together, because, you know, the research I did, it was pretty well-known back in four nineteen that this was a great deal for the county, and I've had former supervisors say, yeah, it was a sweetheart deal for the county. So it's been a long, long time that we've been subsidizing them. It's time for them to step up and and pay their fair share. And um it it's in the interest of all, you know, San Juan Batista, Paulsford, and it's kind of, we work together and to support our firefighters, who've been supporting all of them for a long time now. So that's all I'll say about that. Um as far as things that help, um you mentioned a lot of them, I believe, uh that Councilmember Morales is right, it probably means a more, you know, study, which I'm sorry, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, we 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 need to get asked on November twelfth to come back.
Yeah, yeah, so.
In particular, so I have a ton of data in front of me, so.
Yeah. Um I know you you talked about the user tax and also the different businesses for that's, I know that you talked about, and I think it's a good idea, especially in downtown, you know, where. Would you have to do sometimes if everything's clean and it came for itself and having to, you know. Use funds for general funds for things like that, and mortgages and something like that. So I'm in favor of those kinds of businesses, so. That's all I thought, so you know.
I guess first I'd like to know what your target number is, over looking to, are we looking at five, are we looking at four, are we looking at ten? Over all, most of how many years? Um, so I think that would be a point to know, while looking at alternatives. Obviously, we'll get the reports to evaluate the shared services, um, to meet the city's cost recovery goal. So I think whenever that study we start. Uh, grant funding, if you don't have it, can't raise it, um, then we have to obtain it from another source, and that's usually grant or environment or pastime. I see that you have, on the second page, you have one, two, three, four, um, things that are coming back before the airport ramp study. So I would. Look forward to seeing and and looking at any of those. Um, thank you for using your merit increase. Um. Not saying that you should do that, but thank you for that. Um, to really go through the vendor contracts, it would be important also to centralize your procurement process. So if you have, and I think in in the reports, you have. You know, cell phones or supplies or or things that the entire city utilizes to. Centralize and renegotiate one single contract for the entire city, you'll be able to get more benefits when. Um, I don't know what the uh non-incentual services are, but to get. More of an understanding of what your thoughts are. Um, I think most importantly is to get a report from line staff and bureau of the upper hands about what they feel would be something that they could propose. But that requires a target, whether it's a percentage or a dollar amount, if you say. But um, non-incentual services or made recommendations of budget reductions, whether they're one-time or ongoing. And it's actually um driven by staff, whether it's the company head or the line staff. In other jurisdictions, um, line staff were able to identify ten, nothing, one process. And again, in another jurisdiction, anywhere from four to ten million dollars, any of their problem coding or system improvements. I have a favor of of eliminating or completely or reducing the city council's discretionary fund policy. Um, until we get a goal, again, we need to know what that goal is and what it is. Um, I just want to make sure that it's clear, I would not recommend preferring any maintenance or infrastructure. If there are recommendations, I would like to see the impact because. We might save a dollar today, but we might spend a hundred thousand dollars a little later. I think we all are, we have like a soft freeze right now. So, um, to continue that, but again, when there is a recommendation for freeze, there should be an impact at the mouth. Where's the job function? If the function functions, um, bring in revenue, then I would not consider any of those codes. But I think when there are recommendations for uh reasons and reasons. We should have an analysis of the impact, if it's going to cost us money or if those codes generate revenue. And or put the city and city in in position of liability. Uh, I think. Depending on the amount of money that we're looking to target, you know, definitely on there increases was something that I consider. And I think that's a good start, at least from my perspective. So if you, I again, I think it's going to be really important to understand what the dollar or the percentage is and so on.
So one of the challenges is I have to look at it from two ways. I have to look at it from if the fire contract stays. And then what this council, if it stays, then what the council negotiates and agrees to. Okay, because you can look at where we have a request of four million. And then they count, they counter low and then count, they count some things. So at that point, that doesn't, that helps some, it doesn't help all. Then I have to go through that process and say, okay. Do we provide a different set as uh level of service in order to get there? Or do you provide that same level of service? It's just. Less of a subsidy, it's still a significant subsidy, this is all speculative. And then I would have to go and find where to make those additional bets. So for overall, if I'm looking at. I think each year, we should be putting aside towards the uh. The outstanding balances that were identified through the audit process. You really should be looking at, you could look at it over five or 10. In this case, you probably look at it over, I will look at it over five, but that's going to have more in. Because that'd be about putting about a million dollars aside. If I assume. That we are provided. With what we are asking for.
While you're doing that, you can also make recommendations on a multi-tiered system. So tier one, we've been selling, you know, some of the scenarios you could share, but through a multi-tiered system. Um, and then I would like more clarification in terms of like what those accounts are referring to, or you refer to your, um. Like a benefit or full pay contribution I'm talking about, or, um. Reserves, so.
So yes, you would have a reserve contribution, you would have a restricted reserve contribution. Uh, so you want to make sure that your your restricted reserves, if you have some that are quickly put aside. Then you're going to have your your unassigned fund balance where you may want to commit and do something throughout the middle of the year, like you've done in the past. Um, and then you have what are called due funds and due twos that get put into your financial records where. Your financial statements can't show a a funded zero. So. I'm going to use an example that I used at the time. At the last presentation where we had a handful of funds and where it was normally. So I look at the FEMA COVID nineteen fund. Okay, so that was a fun setup to track expenditures. Put charges towards that fund in hopes to bill feds, get those dollars reimbursed. So that you start at zero, you go into the negative, you hopefully get every dollar back that goes to zero. Pandemic's over, close the fund, there's no activity, move on. Well, in this case, we're sitting on a negative seven hundred and forty two thousand now. So what happens in your in your uh in your audit is they're going to book adjusting entries. That close those out, pull from your cash to bill those out. Then the next year, those get basically reversed. And then follows through to the end of that fiscal year, and whatever those balances are, it does it again. Now, with something like the COVID one, you're not going to have anything to do with expenses. So that's pretty much going to be what it's going to be. So what I have to do is look at, you know, when you're behind in your audits. That's one thing, but by the time they get to, you know, these current years, we're going to have to show some progress towards it. Otherwise, that becomes a new audit finding that you're just sitting on negatives that are sitting out there forever. So when I look at all of those different funds, we had. The Fourth of July fund was sitting at negative two hundred and sixty three thousand. The safer grant, when that was completed, sitting at negative seven hundred thirteen thousand. And the FEMA grant for COVID, seven hundred and forty two thousand. So right there is one point seven. So those are dollars that were already spent that we have to treat as a general fund dollar that weren't, that are just sitting out there. So they, we have to then transfer those dollars in from the general fund. Into those to clear those out and to bring those to zero. But those become resources that are no longer available to you in that budget. So I have to go through and program those. So, you know, when I go through and look at scenarios, I look at, okay, do we do we pay all those off over five years, roughly a million dollars a year? Uh, then I have to look at, um, what it looks like that the fire services is what what we're provided based on what we're asking for. Um, and then look at also what our percentage of our reserves is to get that rebuilt. And so as I go through that process, excuse me. Um, we also have some one-time revenues that we caught in this year, as we discussed it, but it's, so I have to pull that out as well, right? And so as I go through that process, uh. I'm looking over all a net of roughly, if we were to get everything we're asking for a net, of of roughly about five million now. And so if I. And and so and and that takes into account the one-time nature, I actually. Uh, plan on revenues to be flat or negative, catch up for that one time, right? Because if you're at a natural progression, but then you bring in a one-time to increase it, and then that goes away, right? You have to, you have to account for for that, that pickup along the way. Um, the other piece that that's, excuse me, that I will look at as well as we go through that is. On the expenditure side, so if I am looking at that. If we were to receive what we are asking for. And you have an assumption of a negative three percent revenue, because you're true enough, right? And as Casey showed in our last presentation, the sales taxes, they're relatively flat, and you assume a three percent increase. Then expenditures, then that goes across the the next year is. You're starting the year with, because you would get that one-time revenue from. From the county and San Juan. And then that's ongoing going forward. So you would end the year at seven million or seven point eight, which is good. However, then you're ongoing with that. If you're putting them in aside, you end the year with six, so you're going negative one point eight all right. So you have a structural deficit is is the bottom line for it. And so even even as the revenue comes through. Be be mindful, we were saying, we still wanted through the study to get a proper cost share analysis. And and we're able to achieve that is still, uh, known that, hey. The cost is probably here, you're here, we're bringing it here, and let's figure it out together because whatever we come up with. There'll be a a counter argument that methodology is wrong advice first, right? We know. So part of the study that we're working on is is let the let the consultants come up with a way to have these first costs. Can we look at? Time travel, with all volume, we look at other some other metrics, and then we agree on a split each year. You know, all of these different cost shares that we have, integrated waste that its own methodology based on, you know. We paying a greater share of integrated waste in the county because we have more homes, right? It makes sense. You look at everything a little bit differently. Depending on what that service is. But I can, you know, look at it. Basically, I have, I've been modeling everything out through this process, but you do have a handful of variables out there. Um, especially with the negotiation on the fire side. If that goes away, you have a resolution that says if that fire contract goes away, don't do anything, leave leave fire alone. If we're saying that last year we were subsidizing by four million, add ten percent to that, call it four and a half million this year. And then you add two and a half million dollars of revenue. Well, that's a seven million dollar impact that you're now telling me go find somewhere other than 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 fire. That's what that resolution says. So we would have to go through that process. So we can take. That off the table, you know, that's where you're looking at the other items that council member works with. There's no pretty way around it. Um, I know that, you know, by listing the strategies, I I'm. Conscious and mindful of that impact, and I know it's it's not comfortable. And uh, and I'm sensitive to that too, to the council and to staff. But, you know, we we happily address that. The revenue side, the majority of that revenue, except on the user study, a lot of that is is general fund. But your rates, that's going to be on your enterprise fund, which is outside of the special. The enterprise fund, there's not a ton of conversation on that, right? It's it's supposed to be its own standalone business, it's how it's supposed to work. And uh, and so I think the staff's been great down, pulling all those numbers together. But we have to look at that like on the water side, right? If you if you look at a sunny slope versus the city. The water coming out of the pipes is exactly the same. So one might say, well, the price should be exactly the same. And you counter that and say, yeah, the pipes in Hollister's district are twice as old as the pipes in Sizer. The majority of Sizer's old, it's newly developed. Right? You know, you've got some fifty-year-old development close to the water, right? But, you know, the, you know, a lot of the the homes in the Sizer area are relatively new over the last twenty years. That's going to be a better quality of pipe. Right? So when you look at when you're building your rates, you're also taking into account the cost of that maintenance and the cost of those repairs. Because as we know, if we get, you know, three point oh earthquake. Midnight that night, Williams crews out, Summers out there with a team digging a ditch in the middle of San Antonio Street. All of those costs come towards that, towards that fund. Those are all overtime costs, those are all buying balance. All of that goes in, and if you exceed the budget, then, you know, you end up having a fund balance that goes negative. So all of those costs need to be assumed in the balance.
I think what we're looking forward to getting those those studies, hopefully sometime in January, twenty twenty five. I think, but right now, we can't, we can't really anticipate twenty twenty five, they're probably next four years. Um, so I recommend a multi-tier recommendation. Um, with the not the private numbers that we mentioned, so that we have every single scenario covered for for, you know, a three to five year. Um, term. Um, structural deficits are not new in government. I mean, most jurisdictions are just coming out of the three to four year. Structural deficit, and they were able to do so without. Um, negatively impacting or impacting public safety and at least. The quality of life, the evidence, there's a lot of things that were reduced or eliminated. But that did not have a direct impact on people's lives, so I see. Right? It wasn't a convenience, but it wasn't jeopardizing the public safety or the overall welfare. Um, so that is, I think my targeted goal is is to look at a three-tier recommendation. With staff involvement, department head recommendations that would probably best address. The targeted goals for that period of time. And I think the the main point is that there will be. A lot of communication, um, with our residents so that we don't have a primitive, or it's out there that we're having to also address because that. That has the same impact on the time another year, this council, and you know, possibly.
Yeah, without without. Changes to the overall structure of the budget, you'll be in a position where. You 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 end the year with a fund, an available fund balance, and then you build off of that then. So you're projected to end roughly at three million, you have a reserve that that you funded more this year. So that that is there as well, that doesn't show on that overall, you know, calculation. However, uh. You'll be in a position where that end balance would be a negative, and and we cannot present a budget that that ends that. Like this.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you. All right, let's see. On the bottom, I don't set me point four, I necessarily should reconsider amendment. The San Diego County House of Government's power agreement. We have to.
Yeah, I was surprised, some direction or um, an explanation of the process. So essentially, you. Consider this item before, um, and you've been asked, you can vote, so two, two vote. Um, to go action. And so a couple of members have come and requested that be reconsidered. To do that according to Rosenberg rules, you do have to first suspend Rosenberg's rules. And then we can reconsider, and we can reconsider in the past, um, to reconsider. Uh, or to suspend Rosenberg's rules, does require a four out of five vote, so it would require a certain vote from all the council members present. And I have included in the more, have it a recommended motion to do so, um, so it's on page four of two. Answering questions without processing. It's on, so on page four of two, here during the packet, there's four numbers, in the first number, kind of the outline of the process there, and the way that we move. To reconsider. Alternative money, I think, for this. So it said, I move to adopt a resolution to suspend Rosenberg's rule. And reconsider an amendment to the San Diego County Council of Governments. and reconsider an amendment to the San Benito County Council of Governments joint powers agreement to increase Florida's record term.
Do you have any questions about that?
We will accept that.
Oh, okay. Do you have any public comment to say?
There are no public comments to say.
Do you have any questions or comments? Do we have an option?
So, Mayor, I'm happy to move to adopt a resolution to suspend Rosenberg's rules and reconsider an amendment to the San Benito County Council of Governments joint powers agreement. We increase the board record's term length.
All of them, David?
Yes.
What we want to show, that said, we move on then to item seventy-five. That's a resolution affirming an amendment to San Benito County Council of Governments joint powers agreement. Who is going to do the staffing for this? So, do you have any more?
We do have the new available as well as COGS legal counsel.
Good afternoon, Board. Usman Muff, the General Counsel for San Benito Cog. Before you today is the amendment that was previously presented. The amendment's identical to what was presented at the last council meeting in October when this item first came before the board. Effectively, to summarize it, currently, the JPA agreement provides that each member jurisdiction of COG appoints a representative for a one-year term. The proposal before council for consideration is to amend the term, the termed appointment from one year to a four-year term. The reason for that is that recommendation, recommendation comes from the COG board. After discussions about serving on the COG board and the implications related to understanding transportation funding, the fact that the, the fact that projects such as Highway twenty-five and other projects are lengthy projects going from the EIR process all the way to the design process to construction. These projects can take anywhere from five to ten years to even longer. There is a need for consistency on the board and appointments have traditionally been one-year terms and have changed, which has resulted in a lack of consistency on the board. So the amendment was to address that from, from one-year terms to four-year terms. Additionally, there was a recent state audit that was done back in June, which had a similar recommendation of another transportation board. And it identified that in order to maintain consistency, more than two years is recommended for a term length. So I'll pause there if there are any questions from the council, I can hopefully address them.
And Mayor, this is Mary. If I could also just add the same statement from the last time this, the council considered this item. I know we were waiting for the election results regarding the mayoral term. Since this lists a specific four-year term, just something to remember as you move forward is that, that the mayor for Hollister is a two-year term.
Do you have any questions from council? There is no public comment to say. Well, I should run it back, but necessarily further discussion of the motions.
I do have questions. Although it's for the city now, that the attorney that's really had it. But if it was the law of the county, it was important to ask this correctly. At what point would somebody be put in that seat?
So it's one understanding that this would still need to go to San Juan and to the county with pass. And then once that is done, if both bodies approve that, then it would be as part of any new seats would be part of the, the, the conference ceremony at the end of the year for the man's period.
Yeah.
So, if there's no, especially for the most of us. This is second. No reason for them?
Yes.
Do we need a roll call for this one? No?
We don't need a roll call. That was only when we were gonna have somebody first get, sorry, I was reading.
All right, all is in favor? All right. Thank you very much for that. All right, so we're going to hold a joint review post session. So Attorney, could you announce the post session items?
Sure, the first post session move of the successor agency to the redevelopment between Hollister and that board will be discussing, discussing if there's any litigation between, uh, Hammers and between Hollister, San Benito County Superior Court, City Number U two-two zero zero eight seven. And then there will be a post session of the city council and the city Hollister discussing two items. The first is liability claims, first and second government protection five four nine five six two nine five. The claimants are Sudan, Contra, and Veronica Velazquez. And the agency claims against us, including Hollister. The second item, the interestingly, is litigation pursuant to government protection five four nine five six point nine, you know, two cases. And then there are case events, and I knew that will be holding post session in this room. I'm going to go after the class with staff and public.
Thank you all for coming. I think for going to post session here, so if you'd like, I appreciate it.
And here, if there are no comments, I can add any idea.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's comments, thank you.